With our call and order, we have the invocation. We have Pastor Mason Campbell with the Fellowship Baptist Church. Pastor Campbell is going to do our invocation and then we're going to have Troop Seven come up and help us with the pledge of allegiance, okay? Pastor, if there one would, please stand.
Good evening, sir.
Let us pray. O God, our God, we come before your presence the only way that we know how, or that's humble, Lord, in a feeble individual, or just thanking you for who you are, your marvelous grace, thanking you for your son, Jesus Christ, died on an old rugged cross for us that we would have a mediator tonight to be able to speak to you. And it be our prayer, Lord, that you would guard the minds of the individuals on this city council, Lord, that not only have you at the forefronts of their minds, but the betterment of the people for this great city, Lord, that it would be better tomorrow than it is today and for years to come. Lord, we do love you and we do thank you, Lord. Guard our minds and direct our paths for us. In Jesus' name we do pray.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Campbell. Troop Seven, come on up. Just coming up right up here. All right, you're going to face the flag and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. You ready? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Who's your leader now?
I pick them.
I pick them. I thought the leader was that lady sitting on the road with y'all. She's a pretty boss. All right. Okay, with that, we have roll call, men and women.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
President.
Councilmember Aycock.
Here.
We're all here. We have the approval of minutes of January 8th, January 10th, and January 22nd for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All five raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries. We have presentations. We have parks and recreation recognition. Who's handling that? I'll see some parks and rec people in the audience, so I guess y'all handling it.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andy Richards. I work for USSA, which stands for United States Specialty Sports Association. USSA is the largest multi-sport association in the world. We provide structure and support to local, state, and national programs in sports. We have 14 different programs that we carry, which is basketball, baseball, fast pitch, flag football, golf, disc golf, karate, lacrosse, slow pitch, soccer, taekwondo, tennis, track and field, and volleyball. We've had the pleasure for the last three years of holding events in Goldsboro at Berkeley Park.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Our biggest event we've had here is 27 teams for three fields, which 27 teams for three fields is pretty good. We hold about 18 to 24 tournaments per year here, depending on rain. If we get rained out, we can't play. Our biggest tournament so far, like I said, was 27 teams with about a $100,000 economic impact to Goldsboro. That's bringing teams, participants into the city of Goldsboro. I've always, I've told Russell in the three years, if you build it, I will bring you more. We have tournaments. I've been doing this for 10 years. My biggest tournament was 105 teams in 2009. My biggest event so far was just recently in January, which was 151 teams. So I'm telling Russell, if you build it, I'll bring that to Goldsboro. The bond that I've built with Russell over the last three years has been amazing. I deal with a lot of parks and recs between North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia, probably over 100. And the relationship that I've built with Russell over the years has been incredible. Our communication is open. We talk a lot. We're on the same page with what you guys want for Goldsboro and what we can bring to Goldsboro for USSA. Being the State Director for USSA, North Carolina, I have the ability to nominate entities for awards and recognition, for jobs well done. I have done that for the year of 2017. I put in a nomination for Russell and the Goldsboro Parks and Rec Office, and I am proud to present to Russell our 2017 Parks and Rec of the Year from USSA.
Russell, you need to smile a little bit bigger. You got it. Well, I will tell you, you couldn't have found anybody better. We love Russell. Russell does phenomenal work for our Parks and Rec and what he does, and we appreciate you recognizing him and we appreciate what you do for Goldsboro. And you just keep doing that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Russell, you want to say anything?
Not really, just Andy said it all. I mean, we bring tournaments in, get the fields, and that's pretty much it.
All right, well, thanks for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks both of you. Okay, so next we have, our next order here is the brain injury awareness one thing. I know Pierre's here. Pierre's here, okay, good. So I'm up here, I'm going to read it real quick, and then if you want to come up and say something, you feel free to.
I'd like to bring Ken Jones with me. Ken Jones is the Executive Director of the Brain Injury Association of North Carolina.
Okay.
Also, to introduce him to all of you all. Marches, Brain Injury Awareness Month. Hi. Good to see you, Ron. And we should all be aware of brain injury because it can hit any of us at any time, in any place. There are a million different ways to acquire it. The fall is the number one way to do it. But just wanted to thank you all, you Mayor Allen in particular, for doing the proclamation for us, and I'll turn it over to Ken, and I'm sure he has a few things to say.
Fall is number one, but also it goes, you know, from concussions all the way to something severe. And many of these individuals really do not have a place to go. So there's a real need for services and places to stay, opportunities for work for these individuals. I will have to say that here in Goldsboro, you have a real advocate for North Carolina. There are not many places in North Carolina that have something like Renew Life, and you have individuals here from Renew Life. They have three homes and then an extended Renew Life, and many people from all over the state are staying here, and this is a model home. Pierre has done just a great job at pulling funds in to help support this, and you have something to really be proud of here. In Wayne County or in Goldsboro, the city of Goldsboro, I think you have a population of around 35,000. Out of that 35,000, is that correct? Somewhere around there.
Correct, yes, sir.
Probably 700, somewhere around that, 2% of your population is on disability due to a traumatic brain injury. So 2% of your population here, somewhere around 700, is living with a brain injury, a traumatic brain injury, and we do appreciate you signing on to this proclamation.
Well, if you don't mind, we're going to get a picture with you and the proclamation.
Could we get our guys up here, too?
Absolutely. Well, I will tell you about the kind of reflection coming up. Pierre is, I'm going to say dedicated her adult life to this cause. I've been out to her facility, and her and her staff are doing phenomenal work in this facility, and, I mean, it's just, I know it's a life passion, and it's got to be, because I don't know how you do it, but you do.
Well, my own brother is a survivor of 50, nearly 54 years, a brain injury survivor, and he lives with me. Yeah, so it is my passion. Y'all come on up here, so that we can see all of your smiling faces. Derek, would you come? Okay. Derek, all right.
Let's get a Pierre, Pierre, the front. Y'all come up and play. Give it to Jennifer, so you need to be in the picture.
All right. Yep?
Hey Pierre, we got to get this.
Sorry.
My bud.
Say cheese. We got to get one with her. This is the physical. Well, that was hard to work, though.
I think I got it. He's got lots of stuff. Just charge the battery.
Be sure we got it.
I think I got one. All right, good. All right.
I told you something about study. I'm graduating. I'm studying the C.
Really?
USC.
Is it Carolina or Duke? If I had to pick one of the two. My son went to Duke, my daughter went to Carolina, and they said, what's your favorite team? I said, USC, Charlotte, or Alabama. There you go. Thank you all. Y'all have a good one, thanks. You too. We'll give them one minute. All right, so our next presentation is a comprehensive annual financial audit presentation, okay?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The General Statutes of State of North Carolina requires that the City of Goldsboro undertake an independent audit of its financial records and an annual, on an annual basis. The city has contracted with the firm of Carl Riggs and Ingram to perform its yearly financial review. The audit examines by phone all the categories of the city's revenues and expenditures. It also illustrates revenues and expenditures by reporting the amounts on the original budget plus the financial budget compared to the amounts that were actually received and spent throughout the fiscal year. In addition to the revenues and expenditures, the annual audit addresses the city's bonded indebtedness, tax collection, fixed assets, investments, receivables, and cash accounts. A balance sheet describing all funds is presented in the financial section of the audit. Mr. Dean Horn, who is the managing partner with Carl Riggs and Ingram and advisors, is here today to present a brief overview of the fiscal year 2016-17 audit and answer any questions that council may have concerning this document. And you should have one with a nice preface on the front. Of City Hall.
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening. First and foremost, typically, we do this in January, so I apologize for being here in March. We had a great idea with the firm as far as re-engineering our audit process, and as you can tell, we had some kinks to work out of it, but we think we've crossed the hurdle and got all that straightened out now, so it kind of pushed things further back than normally. You do have a report in front of you, it's roughly 160 pages. I'm sure much to the delight of you guys and everybody in the audit, we're not going to go through all 160 pages. We will hit the key points. There's a lot of information in the report, because it's called a comprehensive report because of all the data that's in there. In the, roughly the back third of the report, is a lot of 10-year comparative data that shows the changes in the city's financial position over the last 10 years, particularly in fund balance. There's a 10-year comparison, so you can look back and see how the city's fund balance has progressed over those times. The section in the front called Management Discussion and Analysis is about eight or 10 pages, which is an attempt to summarize in somewhat easily readable form what happened during the past year. So if you were going to pick and choose, I'd certainly suggest you read that section because it gives you a brief overview of everything that happened with the county's, with the city's finances, excuse me. Overall, when you have an auditor, you strive to get what's called an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of an opinion auditor can give, and the reports that the city got on their opinions were unmodified opinions, which is what you want. A lot of people call them clean opinions. The, each of the major funds during the year had increases in fund balance, which, when you start out and you adopt your budget, you basically operate under a balanced budget, so anytime you can stand up here at the end of the year and say we were able to increase our fund balance, it's a credit to all those involved with the process to be able to say that. The general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city, had an overall increase of a little over $2.5 million this year. Some of that was some of the debt that we issued that was still on the books at any union we had spent, but undesignated fund balance, which is what's readily available to meet the city's obligations, showed an increase of about $300,000. And undesignated fund balance in the general fund was a little over 21% of expenditures, and some of you may have heard talk in the past of a benchmark of 8%. That's what the State Treasurer's Office has identified, that when undesignated fund balance gets around 8% is cause of concern. Like I said, we're up about 20%, so we're well above that benchmark there. There is, like Kay said, a lot of information about the debt. I know you guys probably, probably have busy lives and haven't had a chance to go through the report as detailed as you would like, so I will entertain any questions, and if you don't have any questions tonight, and you're right around the corner, so at any point in time in the future, I'd be glad to come back to any future meeting and ask any questions any of you guys may have, once you have a chance to kind of more thoroughly go through.
Is our rating still the same, or is it improving?
Right now, it's still the same because, you know, they do that once a year, once the, all the final numbers are answered. When do they do that, when the new ratings come out?
When we'll be going back, when we'll be going back to the rating agencies this summer, so they will get this new report this summer to review well and to address to the city, but since we're going to try to sell bonds in July, so we should be talking with the rating agencies as of June.
Okay. Any questions for Dean?
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Dean.
And like I said, I'll be glad at any point in time to come back and address any questions anyone may have.
All right, thank you, sir. Next is our public comment time. This is a time that anybody from the audience can come up and speak for up to three minutes on items that relate to the city. We do have, Ms. Diane Hammond, are you in the audience? Oh, there's a wave sitting right there. Ms. Hammond, I'm going to call on her first. She came to see us last week about an event that she's trying to bring to Goldsboro, and I thought it'd be better if her and her folks would just come do a presentation to the whole council, as well as the public in general. So come up, Ms. Hammond, and share your good story with everyone.
Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate it. As the mayor said, my name is Diana Hammond. Next to me is Reverend Mary Reese of St. Andrew's Episcopal Church and Khalil Cobb of Impact Teens, Goldsboro. We're here to tell you about a fascinating program and an opportunity that we are bringing to Goldsboro, the city of Goldsboro and the area around. On April 7th, at the Goldsboro Event Center at 2:00 PM, the Episcopal churches in Goldsboro, together with Impact Teens, bring the story of a hate crime survivor who was gravely injured in the, as a result of a revenge-attempted murder after the 9/11 attacks of the United States. The stories of a young man named Race Bouyan, who immigrated to the United States with hopes of becoming an American citizen and to pursue educational opportunities not available in his native country. He was working in a convenience store in Texas 10 days after the 9/11 attacks. On that day, a man came into the convenience store, asked him a question, and before he could answer, leveled a shotgun and shot him at point-blank range in the face. The man named Mark Strowman left Race Bouyan on the floor in his pool of blood to die. He didn't die, however. Unfortunately, two other young men with young families did die at the hands of Mark Strowman. Race Bouyan survived, but his life changed forever. The presentation we offer the city and the county is a fascinating and inspiring story of survival, loss, compassion, forgiveness, and triumph. He will tell the story of how he forgave the man who almost ended his life. He will relate the efforts he made to save Mark Strowman from the death penalty. He will tell of his organization, World Without Hate. World Without Hate can offer programs and tools to help us in Goldsboro to slow the rate of hate crimes and the ruin of the lives of our youth. So often, hate starts with the influencing of the young. Youth are targeted by gangs and groups who offer them structure, belonging, and to be someone and to be respected. We feel with this program that we can offer an alternative of a life devoid of violence and hate, but a life with opportunity and promise. This presentation and the programs offered by World Without Hate to our existing organizations here in Goldsboro can help. In these days of tragedy and sorrow, we can take action. If we, as a community, can assist one person, one youth, in providing an alternative and opportunity for a better and productive life and eliminate future victims of crime, hate, and death, this program will have done its job. We ask the city and the county for their support. We ask for financial contributions from the churches and businesses in the community to make this presentation and hopefully the programs to come successful. For more information regarding the program, we ask people to call St. Francis Episcopal Church, St. Andrews Episcopal Church, or Teen Impact, Goldsboro. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Hammond, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is public comment period. If anybody else from the audience would like to speak, you have up to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? All right, we're going to close the public comment period, and we'll move to consent agenda.
Mayor and Councilor, your consent agenda consisted of items E through M. You have removed item L to an action item, so items E through M, and again, you have moved item L to an action item.
Make a motion that we approve items E through M excluding item L.
Is there a second? Take it. Need a roll call, that, please, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
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 No, ma'am.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Now we have item L, which is CU-18 SWR property for individual action.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone item L for two weeks next meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All five raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries, okay? So item L has been postponed for two weeks. There's no other items according to the judge city manager? Any report?
Mayor and Councilor, my only report is just to congratulate the county, along with you as the city council, on the opening of the Maxwell Center. I know the county had to leave, but you have a significant contribution in that project, and the opening of it this past weekend seemed to really showcase it and showed it is a nice facility that was envisioned many years ago, that many of you had participated in, and I just want to say congratulations to you and the county, and the commissioners for getting that center open, and look forward to it being very successful in the years to come. That's all I have.
That's it? All right, we'll go to Mayor and Councilor's report. Mr. Aycock?
Just to relay, you know, going to the grand opening and seeing what a magnificent building we have in Wayne County now, and in the city of Goldsboro, that hopefully it'll help, you know, bring some vitality to the, to the city.
That's it? Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on the great combined participation that was evidenced in Goldsboro during the Black History Month. Specifically, I want to point out some activities that I thought contributed to trying to bring about unity and inclusion in our city. Sort of kicked off, though, in January with the Martin Luther King Breakfast, where it was attended by a great number of people. We had a great meal there. The speaker was great. This was sort of followed up in February during Black History Month with a great News Argus feature that focused on people who make a difference here in Goldsboro and Wayne County. I thought it was a great article. It spoke to, or about certain individuals here that are making a difference. And I, it's one of the better things that News Argus has published in a good while. Not that they don't publish anything good, but that was a great article. I was really impressed with the interviews conducted by the staff, as well as the focus of the people that they interviewed. I also want to mention the fact that the Wayne County Museum had an educational exhibit of black members of the community who played an important role in our development throughout the county and city's history. The Arts Council of Wayne County hosted an exhibit developed by Ms. Peggy Howell, acknowledging the local black contribution to America's many wars. Ms. Howell is a friend of mine, a personal friend of mine, and she contributed her time and efforts, along with some people that supported that effort at the museum, excuse me, the Arts Council. The Arts Council also hosted an even of jazz featuring Rochelle Rice, who's also a local young lady, went to school here, graduated, went to ECU, and is now making a name for herself up in Washington, DC. And her mother, Barbara Rice, is also a friend of mine, and I'm not just pointing out friends of mine, but these people really did draw attention to the issue of trying to bring about inclusiveness and unity here in the city. And each one of these events were attended by many white people as well as black people. And so I thought it was really fun. And finally, something that I know Ms. Edwards is familiar with because I see her sitting there on the last row every Wednesday at St. Paul. There's a group of clergy here in Goldsboro that started actually in February for Lenten services, having a service every Wednesday, and the group is called Clergy Living in Faith Fellowship, Faith and Fellowship. This is a program of pastors and clergy here in Goldsboro that go to St. Paul to celebrate Lenten services. It's ongoing through February 28th. It's a combined effort on the part of black churches, white churches, various denominations, and I think Ms. Edwards can substantiate or verify the fact that the church is well-attended and, and we have some really good speakers. But the theme there comes from the Bible, but it also talks about inclusiveness and unity in our community. So I think that we have done something here in this community in the last 45, 60 days that really speaks to what we really, underneath this facade that you hear about of divisiveness, there's a lot of unity here, and there's a lot of coming together and working towards a common cause. But it shouldn't stop at the end of Black History Month or Lenten. It should continue forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Stevens?
I was just, like I say, to Ms. Jacobs, congratulations on everything going well with your mural, and very much in support of your efforts to expand arts throughout our city and push initiatives for inclusiveness with everyone through your means in that way. And then also, I know if everyone has paid attention to current events, that Reverend Pilgrim has passed away, so we like send out, that happened last weekend, we send out condolences to his family in that regards. But another man who really, in his own right, believed in like inclusiveness of everyone, and that was throughout all earthly means and heavenly means. So, you know, I'd like to just speak about that, and just, you know, talk about like we, hopefully we can continue on and believing in that now, you know, go forward.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Broadway?
No comment, sir.
Councilman Williams?
I want to thank all the citizens that applied for our boards and commissions. We had many, many that applied. There's still positions available for the historical commission, so put your applications in for that as well. To serve is really an honor. We really need people in the community serving on these boards. The Summer Youth Program, if you haven't heard anything, make sure you call the offices and follow up the proactive teenagers. You can't wait on your parents to do what you have to, get out there and get a job. Thank you.
You finished? Yes, sir. Good. All right, I do have a couple of things. One, I would like to recognize Mike Meyer. Mike's in our audience on the first show. He's the chairman of the local ABC Commission, and he brings us a check a couple of times a year as our part of the proceeds. I always love to see when Mike comes. Now, he's, he did, he on- Now, he did, he brought the check last week in full disclosure, but he was here tonight because the ABC Commission is building a new building on Wayman Moore Drive, and I'm sure he was here to check on that. But Mike, we're always glad to have you here and appreciate what you do for us. I do want to take a minute, just kind of follow up a little bit on Councilmember Ham's comments. It kind of relates to black history, because I do think, I really believe in my heart that as a city and a community, we did a lot better job with black history this time, this year, this month. Because I've been to many events, seen many events that I never even knew existed. I've learned more about black history than I ever have. So I really feel like we've done a lot better job. Last week, I was at Dillard's, the Dillard had an event at the, I've got too many centers now at our event center. Today, I was at the Boys Club where they had an art contest, and they picked the winners of their art contest. At the History Museum, the Arts Museum, there's just a lot of stuff that has gone on for black history. So I really do think as a community, we've done a better job than maybe we have in the past, so I'm glad about that. I do want to follow up on Councilmember Williams' comments on the Summer Youth Program because tonight, we did agree that we would open this back up for another month. And we also agreed to relax the income requirements. With low income still being our priority and still being what we're after, we are gonna open it up for other city kids because we want to be sure that we have all our slots filled. So you have about a month. If you need any help, please call Community Relations Department, Chaco. I think they're doing what they can, but sometimes, as Councilmember Williams says, you gotta do what you gotta do to get your name in there because we want to be sure that every kid that wants to work has the opportunity to work, and especially our inner-city lower-income youth. It's really important, I think, to this whole council. Following up on what the city manager said on the Maxwell Center, this is a game changer for our community. I'm really proud of the partnerships between the agriculture, the Maxwell's, the city, and the county that made this happen. We bought the land back in 2001, and we were talking about it 15 years before that. So this has been going on about 30 years at least. It was a really special group that brought this together. I hope these partnerships can continue and maybe keep doing good things for this community. Because I'm telling you, that's gonna be a game changer for generations. We are working hard to get the hotel next door to try to complete this, so we have more outside of that. And then I guess lastly, I would like to just take a minute to commend Kay and her staff on our financial report. Getting a clean financial report is really difficult at best. She does it every year, and her staff does a phenomenal job with our finances. And so I just want to commend her and her staff for all their work. With that, I have, if you ever have-
I got one more thing. I forgot to mention Ms. Brandy Matthews is here tonight. Brandy was left last meeting before the mayor spoke of her food box program. So Brandy, stand up, please, let the audio see you. Okay.
Well, where's the smile? Let's see.
There you go, Brandy.
All right, all right, anything else? All right, thank you everybody for coming, we stay adjourned.